Call the meeting to order. This is the August 18th meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. I welcome everyone. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintra.
Here.
Askland.
Yes.
Sims.
Here.
Housh.
Here.
McQueen.
Here.
Also present is Village Manager Patty Bates.
Announcements? From anyone?
I do have one. I don't know if everyone's heard about the Children's Center's very unique fundraiser, Hunt the Cyclops. It's kind of themed after The Amazing Race, if anybody's familiar with that, a scavenger hunt with challenges. And speaking of challenges, I also put an enrollment form on all the council members' tables, and so I'd like to challenge all of us to form a team. I think some healthy competition would be a lot of fun, and may the best competitor win.
Thank you. Any other announcements? We will not have minutes tonight. The minutes for the last meeting for the August, what, 4th meeting will be at the next meeting. We seem to have a pretty compact agenda. I like to see that. Anything council wants to move or add to the agenda?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'd like to decide where we put the proposal about the Environmental Commission, and I guess I'd rather not do it under commissions since it's not really a commission report.
We'll just add it under new business.
That was what I was thinking.
And also, I'd like to add a proposed approval for a alternate to the Public Art Commission.
But that will be done during the commission.
That will be done during the commission reports then.
And I would also like to, Patty, tell me if this is a good idea, if we should wait for Melissa to be back. We never really did talk about the budget meetings. They're all scheduled for regular council meetings, and we need, I'd like to decide now if we're going to meet at 6 o'clock, if we're going to have a special Saturday meeting, how we want to handle it. Should Melissa be here, do you think?
I think it would be better for her to be here.
Okay.
Just because I sent the email to her that you had sent to me asking that, and she didn't have a chance to respond.
Okay, so we'll hold that for the next meeting, then.
Great.
Okay, that sounds good. So I think that's it. And also, citizens, if you would please, and council members also, please turn off your cell phones. And we do take public comment at certain, you know, during most of the meeting. If you're recognized by the chair, you need to come up to the microphone and state your name. So I guess we're ready to, oh, petitions and communications. Lori, are you?
Yeah.
Do I have time to run me that?
There weren't very many. It might be helpful to, just a quick reminder that we have been brown water alert, and it's likely to be particularly bad. I've already had some reports from people because of the delayed hydrant flushing. And so it's likely to be very brown, and it's going, going to be going on all week and starting on the south side proceeding north. So if you're on the north side, you might not have had it yet, but people in the center of the village and on the south side have definitely let me know.
Yeah, well, and yeah, it, I guess maybe we should tell people that we've actually added Guinness to the, to the water system because that is exactly what it looks like. It is the color of Guinness. It's very dark, at least some of the, some of the samples I saw.
Now, we have a whole house filter and have not, and those things cost-
What is the alcohol content?
They cost about, they cost about $30, and I know we're hopefully not going to be having this problem for much longer, but it has been worth every penny to have the whole house filter. We have not had any problems with it.
And it does work if you flush each faucet one by one.
Just flush the faucets one by one? Okay, that's good to know, too.
But we also did receive appreciation for how much notification that we have given. In the newspaper, we had signs around. I think it's been about as we've covered it as well as I think we could.
Yeah. Okay. We had a pretty extensive memo from the Green County Solid Waste Management, which was their draft plan, and Patty Bates said, and talks about this a little bit in her manager's report, basically that it seems to be exceeding its set goal and generating necessary revenue. I don't know if you have anything more to add to that?
Not really. It looks overall to be a very good plan, and they're administering it very well, so I don't, I don't think that it would need, in my opinion, many changes at all, if any.
But I would say that this is the public comment period, so they will actually, they will be having a hearing. I'm not sure, what's in the packet says when the hearing is, and they are only taking public comment between when they release the report and that public hearing. So if citizens or staff or anybody has any input-
Right. Thirty days from August 4th, so basically September 4th, it looks like, is probably the, it's in the first paragraph of the first note.
Okay, so just if-
For second paragraph.
And I think it's linked, do we, do we have a link to this on ours?
We do not have a link on our website, but we can certainly put one on there, and it is also available at the libraries.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's August 8th to September 8th, so that's the 30-day review period. All right. Let's see. After that, it was, there was just the Mayor's Monthly Report, and there's a big summer fest happening in Jamestown, and then we had a note from Mary Cargan thanking us for the Fair Acres Street Repair. It wasn't last week, so I think it was on the table last week.
Last week, so yeah. Okay, thank you. Next, we have public hearings and legislation, Resolution 2014-41, approving utility assessment procedure for past due utility accounts.
Okay, this is certifying delinquent water sewer trash and storm drainage bills to the auditor of Green County, State of Ohio, for placement on the Green County tax duplicate. Whereas certain property owners in the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, have delinquent water sewer trash and storm drainage bills, and all attempts to collect these outstanding amounts have been unsuccessful. And whereas pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 743.04, it is necessary to collect these delinquent water sewer trash and storm drainage bills by certifying these amounts to the auditor of Green County, State of Ohio, for placement on Green County's tax duplicate along with the interest and penalties allowed by law. And whereas a list of the property owners, their addresses with parcel identification numbers, and the amounts unpaid are incorporated by reference and marked as Exhibit 1 in this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, that, Section 1. The property owners who have delinquent amounts of water sewer trash and storm drainage bills are identified in the list marked and attached to this resolution as Exhibit 1. The list of property owners and their property as identified in Exhibit 1 shall be certified by the clerk of this council to the auditor of Green County, State of Ohio, to be placed by him on the tax duplicate and collected as other taxes are collected according to law, including interest and penalties. Payments received by the Village of Yellow Springs Pride are September 5th, 2014, at 5:00 PM. The close of business shall not be certified but removed from this list. Section 2, the council finds and determines that all formal actions of the council relating to the adoption of this resolution have been taken at open meetings of this council, and that deliberations of the council and of its committees resulting in such formal action took place in meetings open to the public in compliance with all statutory requirements, including the requirements of Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Patty, I will turn this over to you for discussion.
These four properties that are listed in Exhibit 1 are four owner-occupied properties. These are not rental properties, and they are listed in Exhibit 1 along with the delinquent amounts owed on those properties. If council chooses to move forward on it, what will happen after the second reading is that they will be certified to the auditor for the delinquent amount plus a 10% penalty. Five of that, 5% of that would go to the auditor, 5% would go to the village for administrative costs. And then those delinquent amounts would be paid on their taxes as part of their tax bill on the next two payments.
Okay. And this is a resolution, so there's only one reading.
Oh, it is a resolution.
So this will take effect immediately.
That's correct.
You said the next two tax periods, so it'll be split.
That's my understanding, yes, from the auditor.
But it won't be taken care of in any single year, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. I have a question. Is this a preliminary to, well, really, it's a council question, I get council and village manager, preliminary to having a general policy that if, after a certain period of time, this action, I understand that this particular resolution is only for these four properties, but-
Yes, and I think that that is part of the discussion over the ensuing months that we're going to have as far as all of the properties in the village that are delinquent in some manner, and we're going to try to formulate a new policy and procedure and bring that to council for review and discussion. But these four properties, you only have a certain number of years to assess them, and these four properties, if we do not assess them now, we will not be able to assess them in the future.
Okay. And they are owner-occupied, you know, I think the whole discussion about how rentals-
Actually, I know at least one is not, but, I mean-
Well, is it a rental?
No.
Then that means-
I mean, the person is not living in the house, the person's living somewhere else, but-
But the issue is whether a renter, whether a renter is driving up the bills or whether these are bills that were accrued by the homeowner. And if it's not a rental property, the assumption is that the bills were accrued by the homeowner, and the homeowner should be assessed that amount of money.
Or their estate.
And I think the next discussion about rental, renters is a lot more difficult because there's privacy issues potentially, there's notification issues to property owners. We didn't want to get into that because there is a much broader discussion. And I know what you're saying, I mean, it certainly appears that we would be going down a path. I don't know that this locks us into a path.
No, I mean, I think it makes sense to go down that path.
But this, I mean, this is one action that we're not necessarily locked into for-
Well, I mean, we're certainly locked into fairness, and we want to treat everybody fairly. What we need is a clear and transparent, here's what will happen, what we'll do first, here's what will happen second, here's the timeframe, and if it's not paid by this time, this is how the village will handle it. That's really fair for everybody if we can have that very clearly spelled out. But it is, it's kind of a big task, especially as you move between owner-occupied and rental properties.
And Patty, what kind of a notification have these four homeowners received?
They are required by law to receive a certified letter that is sent to them. Once they receive that letter, they have a certain period of time, which I believe is 20 days, to either pay that bill with the village or make arrangements, some type of payment arrangement, that type of thing. We did have one property owner that took advantage of that.
Right.
If, once they got that letter, if they do not pay or make arrangements by the end of that time period, then that's the final notification that they get, and it gets assessed. But the letter specifically says that it has to be paid by this date in this amount or it become, it gets assessed to your property taxes.
And that's the September 5th date that's in the resolution?
Actually, the date in the letters may be sooner than that.
Okay.
But that's the date that we have to have it to the auditor by.
And then that, just to clarify, so that means then they would not be assessed the 10% if they pay?
That's correct. If they pay it before we assess it, then they do not have to pay the additional 10%.
So they still have another, potentially between now and early September if they came to the village?
That's correct.
And I'm assuming normal notification, late due notification, I mean, that there have been notifications going out all along that there are past due bills?
Right. These are from 2006. These delinquent accounts are from 2006. That's why we have to do them this year because we're coming up on the end of the statute of limitations. So they were not recently accrued.
Any other comments? I'd like to hear from citizens, any other comments from council, or just any citizen comments?
Ellen Hoover, and really, I have questions, not comments at this point. I didn't hear electric mentioned. Is electric part of that list, water sewer trash, storm sewer?
I don't believe electric is, and I think that there's a statute that says that we can't do the electric. I might be wrong about that, and I'm happy to check it for you and get back with you.
I'm just, I, well, it's curiosity at this point because I'm late to hearing the discussion.
So your understanding is that electric has to be, at least has to be treated differently?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. And you've answered, I really appreciate all the questions because most of the questions I came prepared to ask, you've answered. But I want to restate something I think you said, and you tell me if I'm right or misunderstanding, that you don't really have a policy now, but you plan to move toward a policy, and that policy about delinquent bills will address not just residential, but I assume commercial.
Yes.
Will address utilities, including electric, which you didn't say, but I'm making an assumption. Is that all correct?
It should address all utilities. The only caveat I will put on that is depending on what the ORC says about the electric utility.
Sure.
But yes, other, all other utilities will be addressed in that, and electric will be included if we are allowed to include it.
So at this point, my only comment would be that we have plenty of notice to give input. I am business partners with, may represent Melworks, so we would want input on that, and I would want input for other property we own. I don't personally have rental, residential rentals, but I'm sure other people care. So when that policy is being developed, I think it's the time to give that input, and that's, I'd like to do that.
I would, and I'm sure there are different issues with residential, with commercial real estate than residential. So it would be definitely to at least have both issues, both things addressed, I think would be important.
Right. Okay.
And my understanding is we won't be just inventing this whole cloth. We're going to look at other communities' policies and see how they handle it, and try to craft something that will work for us based on best practices.
We've actually already started trying to find information.
Right. I've asked Melissa for a kind of a spreadsheet of how other communities handle it so that we can really see kind of a side-by-side comparison.
I assume there are communities now doing what is proposed here.
Probably more doing that than what we're doing. We're probably the only one doing what we're not doing.
That's correct.
I think I got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Any other comments? Okay. Council, any other comments, questions? Let's, let's call the roll on this one.
Oh, did Sandy?
Oh, Sandy, I'm sorry.
I have one quick question. I'm Sandy Love, and I just wondered, is it public what these properties are? I mean, the way you were talking, it sounded as if there was a list somewhere. I didn't see a list. We didn't get a letter, so I'm sure not on it. But I just wondered about that.
Is there, you mean, is there a list of all the delinquent properties or just the ones we're talking about?
The ones that you're talking about.
Yes. Judy has.
Yeah, and there were some on the table.
Oh, I guess they were gone by the time we got there. Okay. Thanks. Anything else before we call the vote? Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Housh.
Yes.
Askland.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Wintra.
Yes. Thank you. That was, we're done with legislation. I like that. Next, we have citizens' concerns, and this is for anything of concern to citizens that is not on the agenda already. And you need to come up, state your name, and, come on up.
Hello, I'm Deborah McGee, and I'm here to be a voice for the eight Bradford pear trees that are on the chopping block downtown. I see them as being really crucial to the ambiance of our beautiful downtown area. I love seeing people sitting in the shade underneath them and talking. And I understand that they're, the problem with them is that they are invasive species and invading our, invading our beautiful Glen Helen, which concerns me, but maybe I'm not understanding, but aren't there other trees and plants in this village that are also capable of invading Glen Helen? And if so, why are we picking on these eight particular trees that are so beneficial to us? Also, and then if we remove them and then find out we've still got Bradford pears invading Glen, we've meanwhile lost a valuable asset. I'm wondering why, too, if the Glen, we have such a beautiful pristine Glen, can't we just budge a little bit on how pristine it is so that we have the trees that give us so much joy downtown? The ones that have been already removed, and then there have been some planted in front of the winds? And I don't know about you, but I find them pretty boring and certainly no shade. It's really hot walking along there now, where the minute you get past them, it's nice and shady in the rest of the downtown area. And there's been some talk of if they would be removed, instead of removing them all at once, maybe removing just a couple at a time and seeing how that goes, and just not stripping them all away in one fell swoop. I do think they're just so beautiful in all seasons. Maybe they're not native, but they're just lovely trees. I think they've been there for 40 years. So I'm here just to speak as a voice and say, if there's any way we can keep that beautiful area of downtown the way it is, I'd sure love to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Carol?
Yes. I'm Carol Cobb, Yellow Springs, and I have a question first before I make a comment. It's my understanding that she said that all of them are going to be cut down at one time? Is that correct?
On the, on the, on the east side of the street. We're only talking about the east side of the street between Dino's and Glen Street.
And what about the other side?
They're not being done this year. That side is not being done this year.
Because ironically, I read an article, and I think it was this past Sunday's parade, naming the best main streets and little towns, and without a doubt, every one of them had lovely trees. And they were saying that that's the draw for a lot of people. In fact, at one of our meetings some time ago last year, maybe, we had a couple of out-of-town people come to speak to that and said that they don't, they feel the same way about Yellow Springs. And I was hoping, like the lady that talked, that maybe it wouldn't have to be done all at one time. But my question is, do those few trees, they've been the only problem, they've been the ones that have been the problem for the Glen? That doesn't seem-
No, that's not the, that's not the logic. We can talk, we can talk.
That's what I think, it sounds like.
After, once everybody's had a chance to talk, we can discuss it a little bit.
Okay, that'd be fine. Well, I guess my opinion would be that I would hate to see them gone, having grown up in town and they're being there forever. I would not want any harm done to any other situation or the sidewalks, but I'm sure there might be a different way that that could be approached because they really are beautiful. And if you get a chance to look at that parade magazine, and it talks about those main streets and what makes small cities like ours very significant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Udo Schenk. My son was killed last year, and I have a question about police procedure as far as SWAT in our village. I know that's been in discussion possibly behind the scenes. It was mentioned in the newspaper last week. I think some of you are questioning how we got to be a member of it, and I know several people had commented they felt it was a good idea. I just wanted to say, with everything that's going on in this country right now, especially with the school shootings, I understand that everyone's edgy and that people have to have a certain amount of firepower available when an emergency occurs. I would say that our son's situation wasn't such a situation, and I think the SWAT team and all the vehicles made it worse. And he basically was shot in his own home, and I want this village to understand that it's caused a terrible, terrible sorrow for the family, his two children. No one was allowed to speak, no one was allowed to negotiate. Major Keller, who was in charge of the SWAT, and Spicer, who was put in place, made a lot of mistakes. They stand by their word, they stand by protocol. I'm here to say this village needs to stop this, and if we look at Ferguson and the shootings around this country right now, the way these vehicles and this kind of SWAT is used against citizens when it isn't necessary, we need to be ashamed of ourselves for allowing it. We need to stop. And I hope the village council will address it, and I hope our fellow citizens will address it.
Thank you. Thank you, Udo. I, at, first of all, our sorrows go to you, go out to you.
First time I've heard that from anyone.
And we did decide at the last meeting that there will not be, we will not have an officer involved in SWAT. We are, we are going to have discussions within the community. The Human Relations Commission is putting together some discussions, some community discussions about community policing, and until that happens, until it's discussed, we asked Patty to know, to not, for us not to be involved. There was one officer involved for a short period of time, and that officer is no longer with our PD and is no longer, so we are no longer involved, and we will not be placing another officer back with SWAT. I, you know, we will discuss it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to presuppose to say, until we have the discussion and until council discusses and we get staff comments, I'm not going to sit here and say we won't be. I would, I would find it surprising that we would be, but we're not ready to say that. We're not make, ready to make that definitive statement at this point. It is something that we will discuss, though, and I, I think your observations are good Other, Matt?
Matt, and then Chrissy is back there.
I'm Matt Carson, and I'm also here to talk about the demilitarization of police in particular. Currently, we're, we have someone who was just sent to get trained on SWAT, and I'm glad that you're saying that we're going to be not supporting those kinds of measures. I'd also like to see a way of making sure that SWAT teams don't end up in our village. Even if one of our officers is not SWAT, it doesn't mean that there's not going to be SWAT teams in our village, right? We're also involved in the drug task force. I think that that's a huge mistake, and we just have ourselves removed from that. And we also need to recognize that the majority of calls of police departments go out on our domestic disturbances, like, you know, so what that means is, you know, problems within families. And so we end up sending guys with guns into situations of problems with families, like with Paul's death. You know, and I'm asking you guys to imagine, like, what if we dumped that kind of money into social workers? And what would have happened if the social worker had showed up that day? You know? Those are the kinds of questions that we need to be asking ourselves. And finally, I think it's incredibly important that we actually have some sort of police oversight committee. At this point, HRC doesn't seem to be fulfilling that role. So unless we have some sort of committee with teeth, you know, not just sort of a let's get along, but something that actually has enforcement power over the police department, I think that we're facing some, some real problems, and we'll continue to be facing these problems. Historically, we've seen this happen over and over. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Matt.
Chrissy Cruz. I want to say that I'm glad that last council meeting, we decided not to be part of SWAT anymore, especially considering what's been going on in police departments around the country lately. I have a concern that we also remove ourselves from the drug task force. From my understanding, no one's been serving on the drug task force for some time, but one of our officers just got back from two weeks of training to be on the drug task force. Costs us quite a bit of money to participate in the drug task force, and considering we're running at a deficit in our budget right now, I don't think it's very responsible to continue that program, especially since they use a lot of similar tasks, tactics as the SWAT team does. And I also, with Matt Carson, agree that we need to have some kind of an oversight. Frankly, I was somewhat disappointed to find out that HRC no longer participates in any issues that citizens have with the police department, because going back through minutes of previous meetings in previous years, I understand that that was a pretty important focus of that commission, and I'd like to see at least some oversight brought back to that commission, if not something else, another body in place where citizens feel they have some recourse. Thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy. Other comments?
I'm Sue Abmentra.
for our participation in that task force. I think it has helped the entire region deal with what is a serious regional problem. And we can't just say, we're Yellow Springs, we don't want to be part of the world, because the drug trafficking that's in the region is also in Yellow Springs. And a coordinated way of dealing with it, I think, is necessary and important, and I think we should continue to participate in that task force. Secondly, I think that putting citizens who are unelected representatives of nobody but themselves over with supervisory or authority over our local police department is very wrong. We have a village manager, we have a council that have the authority over the police department. It is their responsibility. And I don't think that any citizen who's not been trained in the legal issues, one doesn't know what their policing philosophy is. I don't think citizens should be having any authority over the police force, other than what we have through our village representatives and the village manager, who directly supervises the police force. So I would urge you to be very careful. I remember several years ago, there was a long discussion at a council retreat about the wish of the then Human Relations Commission to deal with policing issues. And my understanding at that time was that the legal counsel said that you must not, you should not do such a thing, because citizens cannot, should not, be in positions of authority over village employees. That's your job, and we expect you to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Other comments?
Carol Cobs. I'm not sure if I heard everything that Chrissy said, but my understanding wasn't that there would be a group that would have authority. And if I'm wrong, she can correct me, or you can, but more of that, that there ought to be other people that at least might be able to take into consideration a lot of the problems that we feel do persist, and a lot of citizens do. And my own opinion is that sometimes council does not listen to what we feel. And I don't know why, because enough people have been down to voice their opinions about some problems. So there needs to be something done. I think you have a lot more angry people in this town about the police department and the way it's going, and it's not so community-centered. And Lord knows, I know we can't have a chief of state back again. I wish we could, but we need to at least try to follow in that vein. And I personally do not think that's happening, and I think it's going to get worse instead of better. And I think it's because people aren't listening. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carol. Other comments? I think, you know, as I said when, at some point in the conversation, when we started this discussion, we are, we have asked HRC, we did decide at the last meeting to ask HRC to establish a process of community discussion. So they're going to be working with setting up meetings, coordinating it with the village manager, with the police department, finding mediators, finding facilitators. So that will be happening, is my understanding. Brian may report on it briefly during the commission discussion. But that is something, and I think all of the concerns that have been mentioned tonight can be, are things that we can consider and will be part of that discussion.
Yeah, and I will just say, at our last HRC meeting, we started that discussion about a community forum. I do also want to mention, though, that, starting at the end of last year, we began inviting the chief and the sergeants to come to HRC meetings, which are public meetings. And, you know, we also invited citizens to come and have a more informal communication. No citizens have ever come to those meetings. And, you know, I would like to iterate that that is a great opportunity to get questions answered and have conversations face-to-face.
How can the public know when the police chief or someone from the police department will be at HRC?
We could add that to, we did add that to one of the notices, but we can add that to the notices whenever that happens in the paper, so we can make sure that that happens.
I think that would be good, because that is a venue that could be available to people, and it would be good if they know about.
My recollection of the discussion that Sue was referring to was that the problem was, there was a desire for people to be able to speak to HRC as a public body anonymously. And at a public meeting, nothing is anonymous, right? You are here, and you have to give your name. And there was no really way around that. And so that's my, at least that's my recollection.
And from the other side of things, there are due process issues of the officers that are being accused having representation and being able to respond to accusations. So there's really two sides to the issue of, and it's just, it's kind of a legal quagmire. And it's something that we need to discuss, and we need, you know, hopefully there is some sort of resolution. I don't know that HRC is the resolution, but I think that it is certainly something that would require advice from legal counsel and some real thought put into it, that it would be equitable, fair, impartial. Jerry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to what Lori said. When I was on HRC and the village rep to HRC, we did have quite a few folks that did come forward with complaints. What happened was, we had to start televising, and no one wanted to stand up and have their name and so forth going forward. And that kind of squashed the community's participation as it related to the police.
Except that that is also, that practice is what our legal counsel told us we should not be doing. That you cannot publicly, we can't put our staff in a situation of being publicly accused without having due process and the right to respond. Patty could probably address this better than I in her position, but I think that, with her experience, but it obviously requires a lot more discussion. It's not something we're probably well-versed enough in tonight to really get into depth. But your thoughts?
The only thing that I'd like to say is, if you have a complaint against any village employee, and this is not just the police department, but any village employee, and you bring it to me, I'm going to take it seriously. I'm going to investigate it, I'm going to look at all the circumstances, and I'm not going to leave you out of the loop. You know, I can't promise you what the outcome will be, because I don't know what your complaint is or what the circumstances were, but I will take it seriously. There are due process things that are required of us as a government, to our employees, and we have to abide by those. Some of them are in the personnel manual, and some of them are just law. So there are some things we can and can't do. But they do have the right, one of the rights that they do have through due process is to be able to face their accusers, for lack of a better word, and to respond to that. So, you know, at that point, it becomes your decision whether you want to come forward with your complaint or not. But if you do choose to do that, I will take it seriously.
Chrissy?
I just wanted to say real quick that the chief is supposed to come to our next HRC meeting?
September 4th.
Yes, so if any citizens would like to address that, that would be a time to show up.
Thank you, Chris.
Chief and I will both be there.
And just to add to that, that is when we will have a more formal discussion about what that community forum will look like.
Thank you.
Diane first, and then?
Diane Schittister, I just wanted to clarify, I think there's some confusion. We are still a member of SWAT. When I met with the head of SWAT about a month ago to interview him about SWAT, he told me that we are one of five contributing members, municipalities that are members. And at the time, we didn't have an assigned officer, because that assigned officer who was on SWAT for a year had resigned. And I understand council has decided not to assign someone until the public discussion. But I just wanted to clarify that. Whatever step needs to be taken, we haven't yet taken that step, I don't think.
Right.
But I appreciate that the discussion is coming.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate the information.
Sue, just come up. If you don't mind. You know what those television guys are like.
Yeah, Paul will be really mad if you don't come up.
I just believe that it is part of Sunshine Law that agencies of a government must publish their agendas and their minutes. Now, I think the website does have them, if you go searching on the website, but they're often out of date, they're often not there. Citizens really do have a difficult time keeping up with what's happening on our behalf by village commissions and boards. So perhaps you would, again, remind those people of those commissions, that they have a responsibility to keep the information flowing to the whole citizenry, not just a closed little group. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Doesn't look like we have any other comments, so.
I would just like to say something about both issues that were raised. I think, to the degree that people in the community fear the police, it doesn't help the community. And I know that there are some segments of the community where that is the case. It certainly isn't, I don't think, what the council wants or the police want. And so I think whatever we can do to be having better communication within the community and between the police department and the community, it's going to make the police job easier, and it's going to make the citizens more accountable and able to serve their own needs and to work with the police. So I'm looking forward to whatever happens with HRC or the mediation program, and I'd also be happy to be involved in that in some way.
Before you say something about the trees, Patty was going to address the Zini Avenue streetscape in her report. Do we want to just go ahead and talk about that now?
Looking for the right paper.
And Nick is here.
Well, if she's got something to say about it, then.
Well, I mean, I wasn't on council when this was put into place, and I just wanted to understand what the plan was, and then what kind of trees are going to be going in.
Well, and you should have at your place a brief report, and I did put some out on the table earlier. And essentially, what this does is it explains the scope of the project, the relative timeline, and a little bit of the history, as far as what I could put together, because I also wasn't here when this was initiated. And it was begun as a simple sidewalk repair project. It kind of grew into a larger project, becoming a streetscape renovation project with new sidewalks, new trees, new streetlights, and burying the electrical conduit. The next phase of the project is out for bid right now. The bids will be opened on Friday. I will bring a recommendation to council at the September 2nd meeting as far as awarding a contract, and the work will start as soon as possible thereafter. It should be within a week or two of awarding the contract. And the, part of the problems are that the sidewalk is buckling because of the roots of the trees. Some of the roots are even getting into the basements of some of the adjacent buildings and causing damage there. The trees are being topped because of the electric lines. The light poles are not all matched, and some of them are deteriorating fairly badly. Of course, there is the issue of the pears being considered invasive and causing issues in the Glenn and potentially other places throughout the village. I did find out, and this was a question that Diane had asked me, and I promised her I would get her the answers, there are three cultivars being used as replacement trees. One is the European hornbeam, one is the lacebark elm, and I was unable to find the name of the third cultivar. But these were three cultivars that were chosen with the input of the tree committee. And so it's not just going to be one type of tree, there will be three different trees, and they are cultivars, they're not native trees. But the electrical conduit would be, will be buried, so that these trees do not have to be topped in the future. They can grow, they'll probably have to be trimmed up to keep them, you know, away from the buildings a little bit, but they won't have to be topped to keep them out of the electric lines.
And they'll be a little bit more conducive to being the street. And we're also expanding the size of the tree box or the root box that they're in. So right now, the roots are just heaving up the sidewalk, and that's exactly, this project started as a sidewalk project. And it grew into a larger project. And again, I mean, I don't want to reiterate what, everything that Patty just said, but all of the steps fit together. All of the steps of why we're doing it fit together. The trees are being topped, they're unattractive, they're not shaped in a way that is really conducive. We bury the electric line, then we allow the trees to actually grow the way they're supposed to grow. And we don't have to top them, we don't have to trim them. Now, the one thing I would like to look at, and we actually, Patty and I met with Nick today about another subject, and we talked a little bit about this, is maybe looking at more native trees. I mean, I, you know, maybe we can look at more interesting trees, trees that might be a little bit larger. So I would definitely be open to broadening recommendations on tree species that are put in.
And the other thing is that these trees are, they typically live, and maybe Nick knows more about this than I do, but about 25 years, and they've been in since the 80s. They're about 40 years old. So they are, they're not dead, and they're not dying, but they are reaching the end of their life. And in order to redo everything kind of at once, and in fact, we actually did break it into two parts. And when originally, the argument was, just do that whole side of the street. It's a lot less costly to do all of it at once, get one crew in there at one time and do the whole thing, and bury all the lines at once, so that you're not, I mean, the whole idea was not to do one part of the job and then have to rip up what you just did in order to do another part of the job. You just can't do it. And these trees won't last forever. They're not designed, they're living creatures. And so I think it's going to be better, but I realize there is some sadness. I love the look of them, especially in the spring. The flowers are beautiful. But we didn't make, in other words, the decision wasn't strictly because they were invading the Glenn, so we have to get rid of these eight trees. There are many more of these trees around town. It was more to do with everything that needed to be done and the fact that they were very, they're nearing the end of their life.
Nick, did you, please?
Hi, Nick. I'm the director, Glenn Helen. I'm actually not sure I have that much to add to what I think's been a productive conversation already. But I will say that as somebody who loves trees, who maybe not too long ago would have been able to stand before you and recite the entire script of the Lorax, I can say that in a village setting, that trees are something that are managed, and that there's a whole school of urban forestry that we need to understand and respect in terms of the trees within our built environment, one way or another. If we don't manage the trees, they will exert consequences on us by dropping branches on cars or other challenges that come with heaved sidewalks or not taking care of them. I agree with the sentiment that we should try to pursue native species when possible. Oftentimes, the challenge that we run into with native species is they're going to drop fruit or something else that makes them messy for a populous streetscape. And oftentimes, they grow too large for the limitations of cars or other challenges that come with heaved sidewalks or not taking care of them. I agree with the sentiment that we should try to pursue native species when possible. Oftentimes, the challenge that we run into with native species is they're going to drop fruit or something else that makes them messy for a populous streetscape, and oftentimes they grow too large for the limitations of the root box that we'd be providing for them. That doesn't mean there aren't places that we could look, and I would encourage council to dive deep and see if there's something that we can look at that does grow in Ohio, in southwestern Ohio, that would contribute to the Ohio-ness of the Yellow Springs streetscape. I would also strongly encourage council to think about a management plan for these trees so that over time, respecting the idea that we, because of the electric project, there's lots of reasons to get a good, fast start, that over time, replacement would be, of the next round of trees would be staggered so that this becomes a one-time pulse to get rid of trees that are both causing problems in terms of the local management of the sidewalk and power and in terms of their invasive species. And see that over time, we'd go in and, you know, every five years, replace 10% of the trees, for example. I think I had another point. Oh, invasive species. The best time to deal with an invasive species is before it becomes firmly established. And I wish we had the presence of mind to deal with honeysuckle in 1965 rather than start our attack on it in 2000. And the challenge with invasive species is they have the capacity to grow and expand geometrically, and we want to get ahead of that curve. And calorie pears, of which Bradford pears are the most aggressive example, are a species where we still have time to keep that tree from taking over. And to the extent that we don't manage it, we will lose that opportunity.
Thanks, Nick. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Home Inc. C Street update. I see Emily Seibel has come in. Do you have, do you want to start the conversation, Patty, or should we just?
We had a meeting. Mary Ann, Jerry, myself, with Emily, Chris, and Jason and Johnny from the village. We hammered out a few of the details as far as, you know, the responsibilities on the costs. The village will be paying to put in the new water line with a new service to each home. Home Inc. will be paying to put in the sewer laterals and also running the, excuse me, the water lateral out to the service where we're going to stuff it out for them. The fence issue, it was generally, became the consensus after we all read the option to purchase, that the fence is meant to be a demarcation of the edge of the property and that it does not necessarily need to be a man-made fence, but could in fact be some kind of a natural barrier that shows the edge of the property. And there were several things that were discussed. It was also determined that the option to purchase does not specify a timeframe for putting that in. And so we left it for now. Emily and Chris were going to go back, look at what they had, think about the different options, and then maybe come back to us with some requests or some suggestions, you know, possibilities that we could then mutually agree upon. Emily, do you have?
I just. Hi, I'm Emily Seibel. I'm the director of Home Inc. And yeah, I think we thought it would make sense to wait until the Tecumseh Land Trust grant for removing the invasive species came through, since part of the lots are in the wooded area, and it wouldn't really make sense to put up a barrier. And all of the invasives up into the barrier were removed, and then there are invasives ready to continue invading on the other side of the barrier. So we're going to revisit it, see what happens with the grant, revisit it at that time, maybe make some kind of volunteer project out of it. And then I think the confusion that we sorted out in the meeting was related to the sewer taps or the laterals from where the sewer line is to the edge of the street. But we figured that out, Home Inc.'s going to pay for it, and I just want to thank everyone who came to the groundbreaking ceremony. It was really great to get the project going, and I don't have anything else.
I wanted to congratulate you on that, on the groundbreaking, and it was a nice ceremony. It was nice to see the family, and so, good luck.
Yeah.
Construction starts.
That was a really great event, so. If you weren't there, you missed it. It was great.
Anything else anybody wants to add? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Beaver Dam update.
I know this is getting kind of old to hear this, but I'm still waiting on some information. John Eastman did some further calculations. Hopefully, we can reduce the size of the pipe from what it was initially and still do what we need to do for both the beavers and the village as far as the detention pond.
And this is the detention pond on Glass Farm.
Glass Farm.
Just.
On King Street, right off of King Street.
Amazingly, people don't pay attention to every single meeting we have, so this may be the first time that people out there are hearing about the Beaver Dam, so.
Yeah. And so John has, John Eastman has done some further calculations, and he has sent those calculations to Bill Beppco for his review and input, and we are waiting for Bill to come back to us with his thoughts on that. But what we're looking at is reducing the size of the pipe to potentially 12 inches instead of 36. And hopefully, that will happen, but we have yet to determine that that will actually be the sufficient flow. We think it will, but we're waiting on the final calculations.
I have a little bit to add, too. First, I'd like to acknowledge all the people that have been working on this because it is. It's a somewhat complex issue of trying to have a site be a naturalized site with these animals and continue to function as a detention basin. So I wanted to acknowledge Kent Bristol to begin with for calling a meeting, and all of the people, including Bill Beppco, Jerry, staff who came to that meeting. And I'd also like to acknowledge Vicki Hennessy, who contacted a consultant in Massachusetts, Mike Callahan, who then talked with John Eastman and sent, well, actually Vicki bought a DVD. We've shown it to John. I've seen it, we've shown it to John. John sent it to Jason to look at, too. So there have been a lot of people that have been involved in this, and I'm very excited about it and appreciate all the input that people give them.
Okay. Any other comments from citizens? Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business, Tecumseh Land Trust proposal for Clean Ohio Funds. We've had a couple of meetings with Krista McGaw from Tecumseh Land Trust about this project. There is a summary of the project in our packet, so I would like to ask Krista to come up and present her proposal. You found a map.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry.
And it's very concise on one piece of paper.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And colorful.
For everybody. I did have a map that was pieced together out of several, several smaller pictures, so this one's a little bit better, but maybe it's good. I'm Krista McGaw, executive director of Tecumseh Land Trust. Always a pleasure to be here, like working with the village because the village likes to make plans about green space. And certainly, one of the discussions that we've bounced around for really a few years now is whether there could be some restoration work done right over here on the Yellow Springs Creek. This is especially a possibility that's near and dear to our hearts because we've been so invested in working on protection of the Glen. We started that nine years ago, and we're going to finish it up very soon, just hopefully in the next couple of months. So not only has that project ended up including the preservation, which was our initial hope for it, but there actually has been some preservation aspects that have been added to it by Nick and his staff. It's just, it's a wonderful thing, and, you know, creeks like land, really no boundaries. You know, there's landowners who have rights and responsibilities with respect to land, but we would just love to see the whole Swather Creek protected and basically managed in a very basic habitat manner similarly. So what, there's a lot of things that kind of happen, for example, with the lovely little amphitheater, that I guess was a WPA project down there that probably requires some deliberation over time. It just, it is a very interesting little piece of our history here. The piece that we are interested in with this project is potentially using Clean Ohio dollars that are going to be pretty readily available for the next two years to purchase a permanent conservation easement on the land and also to do the restoration work that's really rather major. And the main culprit in this instance, really, that is very difficult to deal with is Islandis or Tree of Heaven. And if you look at the creek basically from either side, it kind of looks like a walnut branch with leaves going either way. And it's important to treat it with just the right thing at the right time. And so here, we're also looking at the Home Inc. site beginning to get worked on, and so just trying to figure out how strategically to make this work. So it's good for the Glen, it's good for this particular property, and it certainly will make things, I think, prettier just at the entryway to the village, which has definitely been something we've been talking about for a few years now. So we are hoping that if the village is interested in pursuing this, that we would be able to work with Glenn Helen to do that very basic maintenance, that removal of the Islandis, or, you know, we would figure out sort of how to break down that oversight of that upfront stuff, but make sure to do it in a way that's really consistent with their stewardship, and then try to work with them in some way to create some kind of mechanism for ongoing maintenance. So that doesn't mean taking over of existing moan lawns. That really just means in the natural area, trying to figure out how to keep those invasives gone, handle that effectively. And once you know that you've been successful with removing them, it's not going to require a whole lot of time every year, probably a few days, to do that, that basic work with invasives and potentially some planting of some native plants. But it's surprising what comes back, really, once you get some of those major, I mean, you can just see how much light that Islandis is sucking up, and then there's a good bit of honeysuckle in the under story as well. So basically, we've come to the village because of the timeframe. October 31, and I think this was in the piece that was in your board package, or, yeah, October 31, is the deadline for the Clean Ohio Open Space Fund for our district. Seven, it's $3.7 million for an eight carnet area, which is actually bigger than that pot of money has ever been before. We don't have to move it at this time. We could also wait for next year. There should be another $2.3 million, which, as far as I know, is going to be there in a year. It went into John Kasich's Capitol bill, with him actually putting it into the bill, and it was passed by the legislature. So I think that that really will happen also. So I, you know, I both don't want to rush you, but I also want to say, hey, this is a good time to get on this, and it isn't, you know, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good, perhaps, you know, insofar as you don't have to figure out your whole management plan forever of that property, but this is such a timely point with some construction beginning, you know, to take care of the big stuff.
And we did, Nick and Krista and Patty and I did meet today, and, you know, I think what Patty, I think, and Krista are going to be working on a timeline of exactly what legislation, exactly what actions council needs to take and what, you know, if it's going to be an ordinance, if it's going to be a resolution. I'd like to hear from Patty. I mean, my sense is that Patty is, feels that it probably is something that we can manage once we get to that point.
Right. In our discussions today, what we came up with was that perhaps between the Glen, the Tecumseh Land Trust, maybe some other contributors, we could come up with the funds for a professional person to come in for four days a year or something like that, at which point we would give them one village employee to work with that person for that time period in maintaining the area as far as keeping the invasives from returning. And I'm comfortable that we, as a village, can definitely work with that and make that contribution. And there are also some other things we talked about, some other possibilities as far as, you know, how to handle it for the distant future. And I think that that's definitely doable, something like that. So, you know, I'm happy to work with Krista on that.
And we need a 25% match, right?
Yeah, you do have to have a 25% match, and it can be in kind time, it can be value, and I think that the easement value would be a way to get some match. I haven't talked to an appraiser yet, and I want to do that probably pretty soon to get at least a ballpark idea about, you know, what we would be talking about. But the good news is that you can really account for time and get paid the prevailing wage for the people who do that initial removal. That's a pretty heavy-duty, high-skill job to take on. The bad news is it's limited to two years with a few exceptions. You can, you can, you know, on some sort of specific circumstances, you can certainly ask for an extension, and that's happened a lot of times. But, you know, what we'd want to do is try to work with the village on some kind of long-term mechanism, maybe even like an endowment at the community foundation or something like that might be a way to figure out how to invest some money that would throw off a little money just to keep up with that basic maintenance. And it would really definitely relate to the habitat there, you know? So it'd be fairly limited, but enough to hopefully really protect that investment on the part of the village and Clean Ohio.
And it's my recommendation that we just would handle, we would just do, deal with the invasives removal right now. I mean, there was some talk about maybe trails or slightly expanded projects. I mean, we talked about the amphitheater. At this point, I don't, I don't want to be looking forward to any other projects. I think we need to get the area cleared out, see what's back there, and then look to potentially other funding sources. There are trail grants, there are other grant funding and other types of things we could look at. But I think that, you know, between what Home Inc. needs to do for C Street, and that would have to, probably have to be separated off. I'm glad Emily talked about the fact that, you know, that could be a separate project. It would need to be because there is easement. We're going to have to give the easement to Tecumseh. We can't do that with private property because part of that will be the private property of the homeowners on the C Street property. So we'll have to treat that differently.
The homeowners own the house. I think Home Inc. owns the.
Well, but somebody else.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not village property to give.
No.
So, but, so I think, you know, I'd like to take it in stages, but I am very supportive of the project. I think it's, so I think at the next meeting, I think we have plenty of time to get, to get all the pieces put together, and that's pretty much in Patty and Krista's hands right now to pull the details together of the process.
So Krista, you're talking about $50,000 for the project is what the grant?
I think, and then to figure out, though, that sort of follow-up piece about, you know, once you've got it stable in three, four years, hopefully, then how much every year? Do you have to kind of go back and do? And so that's another piece that I think we want to talk about. We, you know, it would be, we, some of you guys might be aware, but some of you might not be, too, whenever we take on any easement responsibility for easement, we also get a stewardship donation to an endowment-like fund that generates a little income that pays us every year to go back and monitor that property. And we really can't, it's endowment-like in that we could touch the principle if we needed to at some point, if somebody willfully violates an easement, and we've got to take them to court. You know, that would be the only circumstance under which we would do that. But it generates that little bit of income such that even if TLT, we're in a mode of trying to protect more land. Our goal's 50,000 acres in Clark County, 50,000 acres in Green County, and we're like getting close to 24 or something like that altogether in both counties right now. So we're in a mode where we're really actively trying to protect property to take on new projects, but at some point, we may have reached that goal, and, you know, I'm just, I can't speak for the future about, you know, what else would be needed at that. for the future about, you know, what else would be needed at that point. With that stewardship fund in place, then it, it is a backup form of sort of insurance that even if we went out of business, another entity, another land trust, maybe a statewide major group of some sort, would be able to get that asset with that responsibility. And those stewardship funds for small properties are generally pretty low, like $5,000 one time ever. But there are land trusts that get stewardship to do maintenance. And so we can kind of look to other projects to try to get some numbers around that, perhaps by the, by the next council meeting and talk a little bit about that possibility. So that would be sort of a next piece. Clean Ohio money won't really pay for that piece, but it's definitely important to the project. I mean, nobody likes to see money get spent and, and the project not getting maintained.
And then in terms of our match, so if, if you're asking for 50, then 12,500 is the village match?
Right, right.
And, okay, so presuming that the easement doesn't cover that amount, I mean, is, is this something that the green space fund could be, okay?
Well, and she also did say that, that there would be, I mean, we could assign some, some staff time, you know, some, some cost. So there is some staff. I mean, we might get that down to just a few thousand dollars.
And they have a protocol, that's one of the things that's great about the Polk Works Commission is they've got a very clear protocol. Patty's worked on it before. So you, you know, based on your actual salaries, your actual costs, you know, you, you can determine how much an hour for different types of staff and that kind of thing, once you get the award, but all during that two-year implementation period, so.
During the two years.
Yeah.
And then the stewardship part that they don't fund is after.
Right.
Nick, anything you wanted to add?
Nick Buttis again. I'm just grateful to Krista and Patty for discussing this issue and moving it forward. I think it's, it's really important for the village. This is a, a really interesting parcel of land that sits behind this building that is, I think, a negative contributor to the village right now and a negative contributor to the Glen in terms of it being a vector for invasive species. And it doesn't need to be that way. It really, it, it has a potential to, to return to glory as a, as a, an ecological and cultural asset. The Glen is happy to be part of discussion in terms of the immediate management need of removing invasive species, in terms of a long-term management need of long-term ecological stewardship. And, and if it makes sense to look at it this way, to look at the possibility of a fee transfer where, where the Glen would take, or the Glen Home Association would take title to that area if there's advantages to doing that. So we're happy to have those conversations and, and just think it's important work that you're considering.
So council, are we, other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. There's a, what do you call it, a, an, sort of like an endowment that, that, of money that goes in for every project. I wasn't clear where the money, that money for this project would come from.
Well, I mean, it could come potentially from the green space fund. That would, that would be possible.
And what, how much would it be approximately?
Well, that's something Nick and I've really got to do a little bit of work on. I, I think eventually we could get a point to where we would really only need maybe four days a year of somebody skilled working perhaps with a village employee, maybe with volunteers as well. But I, we have to like kind of look at the curve on that and try to, to get some better numbers to it. The, the 5,000 piece we would ask for also for the monitoring, part of it, that's, that's sort of a piece of area.
5,000 you would be asking for from the village?
Yes.
Is that in addition to the 50,000 or is that included already in the total cost of the project?
That would be an addition.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, I don't think that that's looked at as a part of the original project cost, but we certainly will talk to our staff person for our district and try to figure out about that. But yeah, that's what we got to figure is this other number that would throw off some money for active management, not just a once-a-year monitoring.
And that's different than the 5,000?
Yes.
And the 5,000 is for what they?
That's, that's what we do, well, just, it's important to know, you know, because the village is really kind of hopefully benefiting from all this green space that we protected. So for example, you know, Whitehall Farm, Fog Farm, known by the Fultons north of town as a part of the Green Belt, we have gotten stewardship donations that relate to those properties that generate enough money for us to do our annual monitoring, our reporting to any funders we have for that, our due diligence, all right? And it's, if, you can imagine if you, it would be easy to let slide. We're accredited, so we can't let it slide at all, you know, which is like the wonderful thing about accreditation. But if you let a year go and don't do a visit, you have two years.
I think I see the distinction between that activity that you need to do to make sure that things are being done.
Right.
And then the actual management activity that has to be done.
It's a little different, yeah. Yeah. And you might have to throw off a little, you might need more money in that pot to throw off a little bit more. Some monitoring visits, you know, are less than a half a day, usually hour to.
I had another question. Karen, you were suggesting or saying that you would like to not see anything about paths or about the, what do we call it?
Amphitheater.
Amphitheater. And it's clearly that would make this simpler, but then what would be the opportunities for us to be getting money for both of those projects?
I don't think that what they're doing, proposing to do through Clean Ohio would limit that in any way in the future.
No, what we'd want to do is try to identify essentially building envelopes within the area, such as the amphitheater, you know, and with some wiggle room, you know, just to try to make sure that you're, for the, the dreams that the landowner has, you know, we're, we're leaving some room for in the easement. That's what, that's, that's the piece of negotiating the specifics that we have to make sure the landowner and the land trust are comfortable with.
And it looks like though, that based on your introduction, it says, you said that it's not just that you want to preserve them because they're in the public view, but that projects are favored that include public access.
That's true.
So if you put the, the trail plan in there, I suspect that the grant gets more points. And that's what, that's what grant writing is all about, right? You want to, you want to maximize your points. And so.
And we, we need to come up with, I mean, we just want to make sure when we write up one of these projects that we're not overselling, you know?
Right.
Because we really don't want to do something that doesn't come to fruition and get points for it.
Right.
We may not necessarily need to say very much about public access. There's limited access by appointment only, I think may get you a point or two in their scheme of things. And the, the, the projects that score the best with Clean Ohio Open Space are the ones on a riparian corridor. You know, if you've got that steep elevation going down to a waterway, it's tributary to the Little Miami State and National Zine River. It's, it is very important for water supply for Zine, you know, as, as well as the El Springs. So there's, and the, you know, everything we can do in terms of identification and preparing for the project of plants, animals, potentially habitat for endangered species, that's, that's why we need some window, because we want to try to come up with as much as we can. And actually, I, I will be reaching out to try to find out, have people done a bird inventory back there? You know, have, we've got a lot of work that's been done in the Glen, but if there's any groups that have, have done that, scout troops or, you know, that's Antioch, we would, we'd just love to know what, what exists, because that, that definitely can save us some.
My sense is that if you don't have paths and you've, I mean, once you take out all of that honeysuckle and you take out all the Tree of Heaven and you start being able to see that there's a creek down there, it's likely the people are going to walk through it anyway. And it would be better to have paths than have people just deciding to walk through any, any which way.
You might, with paths, I walked around a little bit with various people here, including George Berry, who I think does a very good job really in Glen Helen of limiting access to paths, existing paths at times, you know? I mean, it's, a tree falls, by just moving it a little ways, it makes it kind of hard to get onto a, a new path that somebody's created, you know? So I think there's a little bit of that kind of management that's just smart to do. Whether, would that, would that be a part of what the Glen, I mean, if you're talking about a village person and, and somebody from, from Glen Helen, four days a year, you could probably pretty much accomplish that, I think. So more not creating new ones, but just trying to limit access to the dangerous ones.
Exactly. And I think part of it is that we don't know what's back there and we don't know what it's going to be. And I think if we, if we claim we're going to create this natural walking area, we just may not be able to do it. But I think if we concentrate on the riparian corridor, I think that that will be the key. And, and again, there's, there's other pots of money, there's other ways we could look at the trail piece of it. I just, I don't want to overpromise or, or overextend the project beyond what we can really handle. And as Nick said, the trail management is another whole thing beyond just the invasive's management.
But there are some natural paths.
There are.
I mean, we, we walked it pretty easily.
There are. It's, it's hard to say how many there are, just because the honeysuckle is so low down, you know, you kind of get that archway about three, four feet up off the ground. So I, yeah, I, I mean, one of the reasons I think I said something in the, my whole one pager there about mapping the trails was just, I, I do think you want to figure out what's there and maybe just more want to limit the access than.
That's, that's really what I was thinking about, is you just don't want, as soon as you open it up, you could have 50 new kind of paths being formed by people just wanting to walk down and look at the river.
Right. And you can have cautionary signage. I mean, this is clearly not a handicap accessible. It's pretty steep. One of the walks I had in the last month or so is, was very slippery. It was soon after the rain.
I had a little accident myself, so.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay, thanks Krista.
And also mention interpretive signs as something that would be put up.
Yeah, and I think we just need to talk more about what, what might those be and what, how much information do we want people to have? I, I think the Historical Society would be really interested in having a little bit about, this is where this hotel used to stand, or, you know, I, I think the amphitheater's fascinating, but I mean, that's the way that it was called really.
So speaking of that, I, that made me wonder with the Historical Society, are the YAS schools, would they be a part of this grant? Or is, I mean, just reaching out and talking about educational opportunities?
For their project-based learning that they're doing?
I mean, there's, there'd definitely be some, some opportunities for that. I mean, to commit to doing, you know, involvement with a particular type of class, you know, for a limited period of time, I, I think that that's pretty doable. I'm going to have to see how we chunk it down, but we, actually our, we've been using our mellifolos a little bit to do projects with the, the kids that come to the youth center here sometimes. And that'd be the kind of thing that, once the heavy lifting is done, just the basic maintenance and understanding what, what belongs here and what doesn't belong here, I think we might even be able to supply a little bit of volunteer help along that line. So, yeah, we definitely, there's a number of things we have on the table right now that I think could be project-based learning matches. We're doing a, for our 25th anniversary coming up in 2015, we're doing a essay contest on living on earth, finding your home in the land or something to that, to that effect is the title of it. And so we're, we're definitely talking to some teachers about that.
Well, I think that, I think you're hearing support. Do we need to have a motion or are we okay here?
I move that we approve participating in the grant, Tecumseh Land Trust Grant Proposal.
Second.
All those in favor, seeing if everybody's saying aye?
Aye.
So whenever, we'll, we'll hear from Patty when it will be on the agenda again.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks Krista.
Thanks Krista. Next on the agenda will be Mary Ann's discussion and proposal about the Environmental Commission.
Yes. So my understanding is that the Environmental Commission has not functioned for, I'm not sure how many years, a few years?
Only a couple, I think, really.
Couple years?
Two years, I think.
Couple years.
Rick was the last rep, I think. Rick, welcome.
And I think recently there have been some issues that have come up that if we had an Environmental Commission, it could participate in working on these issues. In this proposal, I've listed some of them, such as pursuing the wellhead protection plan and education about that, working on a policy about herbicides and pesticides in the village, possibly getting involved in, well, not only the land that this grant proposal is talking about, but in looking at all of the public-owned land, natural areas, and having input on how to man, how to manage the natural areas that the, that the village owns. And so I looked at the powers and duties of the Environmental Commission, and I'll just read the first sentence, which says, "The Environmental Commission shall advise council on matters affecting the preservation, development, and use of natural and man-made features, condition, man-made feature conditions of the village insofar as beauty, quality, biological integrity, and other environmental factors are concerned." And then there's a list of a number of areas, potential areas included, that the Environmental Commission can do, including educational projects, surveys, studies, inventories, not only of public land, but private land, coordinating and working with other local groups. For example, it could be Green Environmental Commission, the Tree Committee, the schools, the colleges, YSI, and state and national, having a relationship with state and national organizations, and working with planning commission. So it's sort of like, it's sort of like the Environmental Commission could just take over the village. I mean, it can do, it has a broad list of things it could do. So I think that it would make sense that, that council begin with a list of things that we want the Environmental Commission to do. I also would like to see people in the community, I'd like to give this, I think I suggested a couple council meetings.
The bottom?
Yep.
The number three timeline? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, the timeline. Because there are people in the community who may have other ideas of things that, that they'd like to see the Environmental Commission work on. And I would see there to be a collaborative relationship between the Commission and council. In other words, that council would initially say, these are five things that we would like the Environmental Commission to work on. We'd like you to look at this and we'd like you to come back to us saying, yes, no, maybe, whatever. What the, and I also would see that the Environmental Commission might have other things that they would come to council for. But that primarily, at least at this point, council would be giving projects to the Environmental As, as I've thought about the Environmental Commission, what I'm, what I think is that we want people to be on this commission, one who have skills and a wide variety of skills, whether it's land management or knowledge about biology degree, chemistry degree, geology degree, some, some skills and of course interest and time in the, in areas dealing with environment. And, and people are very passionate about the environment. So at this, while, we want people that are passionate, but we also, we have a lot of different needs that we need to meet. I mean, we have that village staff that's limited, we have financial resources, and we have different, we have natural areas and areas that people are going to need. And we have different ideas about whether we're going to use, what kind of chemicals we're going to use. So I think that we need to have people on the commission who are able to work well together and to consider different viewpoints. So it, on the one hand, So it, on the one hand, they need to know something about what they're doing, they need to have a passion, they wouldn't be on it otherwise, but they also need to be able to listen to other points of view.
That's the goal for every commission. I haven't found the commission that we want people to not get along.
I suppose it is, but I'm just very aware in the environment that people can get very, I mean, we've seen that tonight, people who are very, hold the trees downtown to be very dear. And so this is an area, I think, in particular, that generates them. So anyway, I'm recommending that we re-
I don't think we have to do anything. I think Judy has to, we have to get people, we have to get five people.
Send out a notice.
Get five people.
I mean, yeah, in my mind, especially based on our last meeting, why wait?
Yeah.
I mean, we've got things.
I think we should advertise it.
Well, is it five, it's five members, but one is a member.
Or four, is it four citizens?
It says, five members, one member shall be a member of council.
Okay, so then four.
Yeah. So we just need four people.
And I would, I only have one committee, and this is an area, I do have a biology background, and it is an area that I'm interested in, especially, I'm interested in the public land that we have, and how we manage that. So I, yeah, I would like for us to advertise to citizens. I'm hoping that we can get a number of citizens who have the time and interest to be involved, and then I'd like us to have an opportunity to review the names, maybe have two council people interview people, so that we can come up with a group of people that'll be effective. And of course, you don't have to be on the Environmental Commission to be a resource person or to have input into it. So it's an opportunity for anyone, they might not want to be on the commission, but there might be, they might have passion about a particular issue.
They might really want to work on the wellhead protection plan, and they could-
And all of the commission, all of the commissions had been larger, and then we constricted them by ordinance, because they're all created and established by ordinance. We constricted them back down again. I mean, and this is pretty small, four people. I can see the potential that maybe, you know, because there is heightened interest in all of these areas, that you might get more people. I don't know that I, you know, I want to go back to legislation already to start to deal with the size, but, and did we, did we make it a specific size? I thought we, at some point, were talking about five to nine or something. Were we, or five to seven? Were we?
Last year, you guys talked about that.
But I don't think we did it.
Right.
But I mean, we don't need to worry about that right now.
Even if we said it, yeah, a minimum of, minimum of four members.
Something, yeah.
Also, it's been, some people have suggested that we might reach out to the high school, have a student, you know, have a sort of special student member, have someone from Annyott College.
The college would be great, yeah.
Or a professor, a staff person at the college would be great to have.
I mean, this isn't, you know, I don't, and again, I don't know how much of this, this is an incredibly aggressive list of things, of accomplishments, of things to do. So I think that, you know, I'm not, I don't see five people getting it done, honestly. I mean, even just making recommendations, that's lots, a lot of work. So I think, you know, once the commission gets together, we have to find two.
What they may say is, we need a task force that's just working on the wellhead protection plan, or something like that, that may be what the Environmental Commission decides.
Does anyone, does anyone else on council have any thoughts about this?
I mean, beyond just, let's do it, you know, get it going, I would also say that, you know, depending on what kind of feedback we get, we should think about alternates. We've already set that precedent for other commissions, like the HRC, and I think it's really important, because, you know, that is a way, we saw with Planning Commission, to make sure you have that quorum, so you can make important decisions. So I don't know if there's a way for us to kind of overlay that on all our commissions somehow, but I think that that's something to keep in mind.
Maybe something we look at, you can look at, maybe look at and see how we can have maybe a general category of council commissions or something, and instead of going back into each ordinance and having some kind of general language. And the other thing related to membership is, you know, we've kind of gone off and on on how, how deep we get into interviews, whether we actually even do interviews. So it would be my preference that if we're going to start interviewing for Environmental Commission, that we set that as a precedent, that we are going to be interviewing members for all of our commissions. It doesn't make sense to me that we're interviewing one commission and not another. So if that's, it's something we've talked about and we've practiced in the past.
Yeah, it just kind of stopped for some reason.
Right, so if that's, you know, that's something going forward that I would like to suggest.
One other thing that occurs to me is that there would probably be some interface between the Environmental Commission, not just with the Planning Commission, but with like, the Arts and-
Yeah, Public Art Commission.
Public Arts Commission on-
Sure.
Public lands.
Definitely.
Do we want to hear, is there anything, any bit out there?
Citizens, any comments, thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Great.
So Judy, you know what you need to do?
I do.
She loves putting those ads in the paper. Now it's time for Patty's report. We're done with most of it.
We've covered part of it already. Council had a request prior to my arrival, for us to consider placing a stop sign at the intersection of High and Herman Streets. I have looked at the intersection myself, Chief Penaford has looked at it, the staff members have looked at it. After talking to everybody involved, we have a recommendation that we think will solve the issue of people cutting the curve a little too tightly and potentially causing accidents. One thing that we would like to do is, we will do, is repaint the striping on the road to delineate the, not only the center line, but potentially the sideline, so that people have a clearly defined driving lane. The second thing is, if you're coming on, if you're coming down Herman to High, there's a yield sign, which is currently obscured by bushes, we're going to trim that back, but there is no sign coming down High Street to make the turn, the left turn onto Herman. And we want to place a sign there, so that if you're coming down High, you see this sign that says, there's a curve coming up, stay on your side of the road, something, you know, brief that you can put on a sign that lets people know they need to stay on their side of the road as they're approaching that intersection, so that they do what they're supposed to do and stay on their side of the road. We think those three things taken together will probably alleviate the problem. If it doesn't, council can always go back and consider the stop sign again, but that's how we'd like to start the process.
Sounds good.
We have a problem with the trash cans along Xenia Avenue rotting at the bottom. They're made of metal, they're rotting at the bottom because they, you don't put bags in them, Rumpke doesn't put bags in them when they empty them, they just are metal cans. We've looked into purchasing plastic liners, molded plastic liners, that can go in those to keep the bottoms from rotting. Those are very, very expensive, to the tune of about thirteen thousand dollars. Yeah.
And how many trash cans is that?
We have a total of forty-something on both, between Xenia and Dayton. I believe that Jason said we're affected. We're looking at other possibilities. I mentioned, I've talked to Karen and I've talked to Brian about the potential for having the aggregate cans potentially redecorated in some way to make them a little bit more appealing, and putting them side by side, one for, you know, regular trash and one for recycle. We've talked about purchasing a different kind of can, and we're looking at all of that. Those garbage cans that are currently on Xenia Avenue and Dayton Street could be reused at, say, Gaunt Park, or one of the other parks where our personnel would empty them, village staff would empty them, and therefore, we could put bags in them. It's just not feasible to do that with the cans that Rumpke empties, because of the time constraint. So I will keep you updated, and we'll be working with the Public Arts Commission on potentially different ways to decorate the cans downtown and make use of what we have.
And you got what I sent about the ceramic?
I did, I did, thank you very much.
Make sure that the recycling is very clearly labeled. If it's not clearly labeled, people don't do it.
What we were going to do with the cans is paint the top of one of them green with the recycling symbol on the top, and it would say recycle.
What I would suggest is talk to Tom Clevenger here in town, that's, he's got, that's his area of expertise, is he was the head of recycling at the University of Washington for several years. So he's got very clear ideas about what actually works with public signage and what doesn't work.
Great, yeah, I'll invite him to our next Public Art Commission meeting, because we should be ready to talk about it next month, maybe.
I would think so, I think so. The work on the limestone streets, the street improvements has begun. They should have gotten across Walnut Street today with the water line, I didn't get down there to check it. They are hoping to be all the way across Xenia Avenue by next Thursday. They've run into a couple of problems with some of the limestone, surprisingly on limestone street. So that slowed them down a little bit, but they are moving along with that, and they should be out of the way by the time school starts on Friday. Yes, we did begin flushing the water system today. Not only did council get calls, but we got several calls. We're just asking people to be patient about it. The crews are working as quickly as they can to get the system flushed, so that everybody has nice, clear water. There has been some discussion as to doing parts of it at night, especially down by the Friends Care Center, because of their water needs. So they are working to get it done as quickly as possible, and at a minimum of inconvenience for the residents.
Patty, we used to, we used to do it, starting at four in the morning.
Yeah, and that's something that Johnny has talked about, and he's going to schedule his crew, at the time, he was going to go down and talk to the Friends Care Center, and see what they had to say about what timing would work best for it.
Especially when we got downtown.
Right.
Because we wanted to make sure we were done before the business is open up.
Right, yeah. I will talk to Johnny and make sure that that is happening. The last thing that I have is not on my report. Last council meeting, we talked about applying for a Nature Works grant, and we actually passed the legislation to enable us to do that. The next day, I got an email from Green County. Apparently, in Green County, they do this cooperatively, each, let me back up a little bit, each county in Nature Works gets a set amount of money based on your population for your county. But generally, you apply to Nature Works, and they just give the money out until that amount for your county is gone. There are two counties in Ohio that do it a little bit differently, and they get together and cooperatively decide who gets to apply for the money that's available that year, and try to make sure that it's not the same people every year getting the grants. This year, it was decided that it was Beaver Creek and Jamestown that are, were going to be the two that were permitted to apply. We were the only other municipality that wanted to apply. That kind of puts us at the forefront for next year, but we were, it was decided that it would not be Yellow Springs turn this time, because we apparently, in the recent past, got a large amount of money from Nature Works, and these other two entities had not gotten the money for a while, so they were trying to even it out a little bit.
It's probably for the Glen. I don't know of any public projects that we got grants for, so.
I think it was a Nature Works that we got for the Glen a while back.
It was the bathrooms.
At the Glen, the ba, yeah. The handicap, yeah.
So anyway, I will continue to look for other sources of funding, and I did get the information on the plastic, the molded plastic that was in that particular piece of equipment we were looking at, and I did forward it to Nadia, and I think also to Brian.
Yes.
And so we do have that, and she's reviewing that, so if the opportunity comes up, we'll at least be on the same page, and we can take it to the PAC.
Great. Patty, are you done? Okay, I just wanted to, you mentioned about the tree trimming, and I was wondering if there've been any thoughts about the tree by the funeral home on Xenia?
You know, I, it's on private property. I did go down there to introduce myself and talk to them about it, but unfortunately, they were not there at the time, and I need to try to get back down there and talk to them about it.
They will never be there, you're going to need to call them at their headquarters in Springfield. They really are only here when they have a funeral. So you'll need to call. The contact is Frank.
Yeah, I'm getting nervous about that one.
Yeah, they're very dangerous.
Yeah, it's dead.
When they're, they get so brittle.
Yeah.
The ash tree.
Yeah, and it's huge. And then, can you give an update about Ellis Park?
Oh, yes.
About the bridges?
I'm sorry, you did ask me to do that, and I completely forgot. What Brian is talking about is the two pedestrian bridges-
Yep.
-at Ellis Park. Jason is talking to the local Boy Scout troop to see if they have an Eagle Scout, or that someone locally has an Eagle Scout who's looking for a project. And that would be probably the footbridge that would go across the back stream, back in the arboretum. What we've talked about up front by our spillway is potentially putting two concrete culvert pipes side by side to allow the drainage to come over and go down those with a pedestrian bridge over the top of that, made, I believe, out of wood, is what Jason is talking about, a nice wooden footbridge over that. So that's what Jason is working toward, is to get those pipes in place and get the bridge over the top.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are the standing reports from council representatives. We'll start with Lori.
Okay. Planning Commission did not meet this month, but I suspect we'll be back at it next month. And the Green County Planning Commission had a project that we looked at down by Springburl, and also passed the budget, and there was much contention with budget cuts from Green County that is ongoing. And I think there was an email about that.
Yeah, I did include that. I went to the, I went to the county commissioners' planning meeting about that, and what's, why am I going, Alan, why am I going blank on, who's the director?
Steven.
Steven. Steven, yeah, Steven got a little bit, a little bit of, Sherahan was there, talking to about, you know, we asked you to cut the budget, we told you we needed to cut the, you needed to cut the budget, and they actually came back with a higher budget.
Hmm.
Adding an extra staff person. So I think that they're going back to the drawing board. Green County, I think, regional planning is going back to the drawing board to come up with a new budget, look at the budget, and, because the reality is that, and there is actually talk now that Xenia may be pulling out. Beaver Creek's already pulled out, Fairborn's pulled out, and there's talk that Xenia will pull out. That's, those are the main funders, those large communities, because it's a per capita. My position, and what I said, is that I would rather see them kind of lower the fees for the municipalities who aren't directly using the services, because I feel like we need regional planning. We need somebody looking at the region, planning it. It's not just about, oh, we're going to look, we're going to review this project. Yeah, that's a piece of it, but it's broader. It's having a planning arm, looking at the whole county. So I'm hoping that this is going to be worked out. I'm hoping that they're going to find a way, they're going to increase fees. Our fee would be increased, they're going to increase fees on the developers, and then find out what the difference is, and the county will have to decide if they're going to add that money in. Otherwise, they're going to be cutting staff, they're going to be going from two down to one, potentially. So that was, so that was it.
That's it for me. Who's next?
Jerry.
That's me. The Library Commission, they didn't meet this past month, and unfortunately, I missed both the Community Resources and Mediation meeting. I do know that Community Resource will be meeting down at Peaches on Friday to have an open discussion. Mediation didn't meet, and I'll get the minutes from John and pass them on.
So first of all, Human Relations Commission, the block parties are in full swing, and I've been able to stop by quite a few, and I've been hearing all kinds of great things. Thanks to the village for helping set everything up. You know, just the idea that we're supporting this and new families are getting to meet each other. I know the one that happened, um, at the 1300 block of Spalan was, uh, they said the first time they'd ever done one in that area as far as they knew before. And that was really exciting for them. So, uh, I'm glad that it's been reinvigorated and I want to thank the HRC because there's been a lot of energy put into getting people excited. I mentioned yellow springs help.org, which is our online, online resource guide. That website is now done and so we're starting to test it. And basically the idea is service providers that, you know, everything from help to pay your bills to food banks to mental illness support, input their own information on their services and then ultimately we're going to be training organizations and, uh, the PD, et cetera, to use this. Uh, we also applied for a Miller Fellow, I think I mentioned, to, to help with, uh, training people on how to use it. And, uh, we approved several projects, uh, to support youth leadership at the schools and also, uh, self-defense for, um, female students. So we're excited about those projects. So, we've been busy. Community Access Panel, uh, what did I write here? Oh, uh, we are going to have a link on our main website to the village meetings that are on YouTube. At this point, I think it might've been hard for some people to find them because Community Access Panel has a sub-site. I talked to Bruce today, uh, because I found out this was something that Paul had recommended. And so that should be on there and Judy, I think you recommended right on the, on the main page.
Yeah, I would think, because that way you don't have to do so many sub-links under each.
I found it difficult to find the meetings.
Right, yeah. So that should not be an issue. And then, of course, once we move over to the eGov site, then that will also be prominent. And, uh, in our last meeting, we agreed to, uh, have Community Access Panel take on the municipal broadband issue. So, uh, as, as Jerry knows, because he subbed for me, the SpringsNet representatives came. We're going to be meeting, uh, on Wednesday. So the Community Access Panel meeting has, no, the Community Access Panel meeting has been canceled, but there's going to still be, uh, some of the SpringsNet folks meeting to talk about some of those issues so that they can then bring that to the Community Access Panel next month. All right, but there are signs up that that's been canceled. Regarding the Public Art Commission, uh, we reviewed the street musician agreement. And there weren't a lot of changes that were recommended, a few tweaks. But what the consensus of the group was is that we really hope that at our next meeting, which is September 10th, that some of our local buskers will come. Uh, I, I think there was a strong feeling that before we finalized the pilot policy, that we would really like to get their input. And so, uh, you know, we'll try to make that as, as clear as possible to announce and reach out to them, uh, to attend and, and just get their feedback on what they think. And, uh, we had the presentation with Thought Bubble. And so I guess this is something that I was, uh, tasked to come back with a recommendation. It turns out that, uh, there are more things to consider with the skate park. So what I would like to do is, uh, set up sort of a, an area for council and the Public Art Commission members to look at how it would function, um, if we were going to use the skate park since we could still use feedback. For example, we're talking about different ideas for location and whatnot. So I thought in the next two weeks, um, if everybody agrees that we could look at that internally, if we think that this is a tool that makes sense for, um, the Village Public Art Commission to use, then we could make it public. So, um, I guess.
I don't totally understand what you, what you're doing. You're going to set it up and just, we'll have access to it?
Yeah, so we'll not, it's not going to be public. Uh, right now, it's just, it's actually set up for us to use, um, and we can play with it internally. And then if we, uh, think that it's something that would be useful, then we could make it go live.
I'm guessing that's a violation of sunshine law.
I don't know.
What is?
I'm guessing it's a violation of sunshine law.
For us to look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, there's.
I mean, all of, council cannot participate.
Maybe.
Only two council members can participate on Thought Bubble.
Okay.
Yeah, so if two council people tried it and.
I'll accept what you guys come up with.
Okay, I mean, another option is, we can just try it.
I think you can just, I'm fine with you guys just trying it personally.
Okay, awesome.
Just try it, see if it works. If it works, great.
Great, and again, it's.
But you can send it. Now, you know, we can go on it, we just can't communicate. So, you know, send us all of the information so we can go on it, we can see what's happening. We just can't respond, we couldn't respond among ourselves about it.
Right, and we did talk about, related to sunshine law, that it is not something that we can deliberate, you know, as a commission on or anything like that, so.
I mean, you guys cannot be on it any more than we are. I mean, you guys are going to have to limit your numbers.
Right.
Uh, you understand that Public Art Commission members only, how many of you, of them, of you are there?
Six.
Then only two, only two of you can participate.
Six, including alternates.
Uh, we haven't voted on the alternate yet, but we have six full members.
Oh, you have six, six full members?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is three, is three a majority or?
And actually, I guess I'm included, so we really have seven.
That's, that's it. It's always got to be.
Then only three of you can, can communicate.
Right, but I guess, you know, what we had, um, so I, just to roll back, um, we had talked about sort of, you know, playing with the application, but in terms of deliberating or anything like that, everybody understands. And we had a lengthy discussion about, we can use that information and talk about it in our publicly announced meeting, but not use it as a tool to communicate with each other.
But I, so, but I, what I'm saying is that I think, um, our legal counsel would say only three of you could be participating on that.
In that open forum.
In that forum.
Yeah.
So, so you probably need to, on this particular subject, pick three PAC members that are going to be the participants.
Right.
And, so those three members are the only ones who can.
Right, yeah. And the reality is, it's.
It's more to get outside.
It's getting outside. So when, so when I talked, when I thought about playing with it, it was more just putting comments on there, but, you know, just seeing how it works. But I understand the concern and, yeah, everybody does know we can't deliberate or anything like that. It's for outside feedback. Okay, great. And then, uh, we get to, uh, A.J. Warren. So I, I know we had in our packet a letter of interest and, uh, A.J.'s resume. I feel like we've almost had two council people interview A.J. because I've worked with A.J. quite a bit. Karen's been to several meetings. And so, uh, what I really like about, um, A.J.'s involvement is number one. He's, uh, young, he's 23. Uh, he also has a lot of expertise, uh, as an engineer and he's brought a lot of value to the skate park project. And he's specifically applying to be an alternate in this case. And, uh, so, but he can kind of see how it works and, and ultimately I think he'd be interested in being a full member. But, uh, what I would like to make a motion is to approve A.J. Warren as an alternate to the Public Art Commission.
I second.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Mary Ann?
Okay, the Energy Board did not meet this month. I got something in my packet, but was that only from, for me, Judy?
No, it was in everybody's packet.
It's from the May meeting.
Yeah, and then there were all these emails.
Is that what was presented at the hearing, at the appeals hearing?
Yeah, right, that's what Lauren read?
Yeah, that's from Energy Board. I, I, it happened while I was gone and it was printed out as goes in the next packet because it came in late, so.
So those were the emails that she read at the meeting?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm not sure why the May meeting, I mean, we've had meetings and minutes since the, the May meeting. And I reported on the last meeting that we had, which was when we had, um, Joe Sampson, I think his name, from, uh, St. Pierre's, come and talk about, um, uh, the solar array that serves their water treatment plant.
Whenever I get approved minutes is when they go in, so.
I, I didn't get any of, any information.
I'm sorry?
In the electronic packet, there was no information, none of this.
I actually have no idea why those are in there. I haven't the biggest clue. I was gone, they were in the stack. Babette packed them. Your guess is as good as mine. There you have it.
And just for my clarity, the secretary of, well, any board, I guess, sends the minutes to you? They're supposed to.
Y'all need to approve them and then send them to me, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And it, it often works that people send them and they're not approved and then I have to say, go forth and approve. And then they eventually get back to me, but yes, it, it's, it helps a lot if, um, uh, the council rep or whoever just says, you know, as soon as these are approved, send them.
Okay, I wasn't up on that and I hadn't been saying, but.
Yeah, it's kind of, everyone sort of does it differently, every commission.
But I think, I understand, I talked to Eric Johnson, who's the secretary. He's, he indicated he sent them, sends them to you, so.
Maybe he sent the wrong ones and that's why the May 13th ones are in the packet.
I don't know.
Accidentally.
I don't know. Were August, July? So, so the Ju, the, yeah, there should have been June minutes, which would have been.
I never put them and put them out, frankly. That's just because they were, they were there. I never put them.
Did you meet in July?
Yes, not in July. That's the meeting that I.
This is just the information that was brought to us at the last.
The last meeting.
Meeting about the, the solar array. And this is what the, because what circled on the second page, or did you circle that?
I did not.
Is the information about sunshine law.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's why I think there's, the May minutes are here. But I, I could be wrong.
I can figure it out, but not now.
Okay. Okay. Are you done, Mary Ann?
I'm done.
Chamber, we have a, um, a meeting here. It's at noon, um, in rooms A and B this coming Thursday. It's about constant contact letters and announcements. So, um, we already have almost 50 people signed up and we're going to reach occupancy on that room pretty fast. So, um, I'm really excited about it though. I actually just went to a presentation in Cincinnati last week and we heard some stuff on constant contact and it was really valuable. MVRPC, it was a very quick meeting, probably the quickest I've ever been there. Probably took longer to drive back and forth than we met. They did do a presentation on the Dayton Region Green Initiative that I'm very interested in. It's through Montgomery County, but they're looking for other communities to be involved and businesses to be involved. So I'm, I actually, the woman who's in charge of it sent me a resolution. They're asking communities to pass resolutions. Problem is that the resolution is very centric to, to Montgomery County. So I'm talking to her about how can, how can they expand their effort and how can we be involved? Because it, it just doesn't seem to make sense if it's just Montgomery County. So I'm trying to fine tune that so that we can, we can get involved because I would like to be a community that represents, um, this green, sustainable initiative. And I realize that I just skipped over our well-rested and tanned and, uh, very athletic.
Lobster eating.
Clerk.
Oh, yeah, well mostly it was thank you for putting up with my absence and, uh, especially thank you to Babette, Patty and the fans who held down the fort and, um, made copies of confusing things in my absence.
Would you, would you tell everyone what your, what your, what place you came in and what you did, your athletic achievement?
Yeah. I should just note that once one gets kind of elderly and stuff, one's age brackets get, get huge. The number of participants within them shrinks. But you won. I did. Yes, I won.
Tell everybody, nobody knows what you're talking about.
It was the Lake Erie, uh, two mile open water swim and it was.
Wow, in the gay games.
Gay games and master swim, so.
I think we had quite a few folks from Yellow Springs up there this week.
Yeah, Christine Hofstra won.
It didn't.
Christine's got to get like a shirt but to bring the medals back.
Was Melissa, was Melissa there? Well, and, and Delaine, Delaine Atkins did, um, hockey.
And, um, her partner.
Andy?
Andy, Atkins and Delaine, yes, both of them did hockey and Christine did a lot of biking. And that's, those are the only folks that I know about.
So that's great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then, and then she went and ate lots of lobster. No, did that before.
Oh, you did that before.
So you were swimming.
It was lobster powered.
Environment.
That's right.
Um, okay, let's, thank you and we did miss you, although I agree with you, Patty and Babette did a great job, so. Onto future agenda items. One item, do we have legislation, are there, do you know, are you aware of any legislation we'll have?
You'll have the legislation that awarding the, um, the bid, the four bid, three bids that were opening Friday.
And that's a resolution?
Or what?
Streetscape?
Streetscape, Gaunt Park renovations and, um, Mills Lawn sidewalk repair.
Okay.
What about the water plant and the?
That RFQ is out and I can't remember the date off the top of my head.
September 8th.
September 8th, John knows. So it will be after, that one will not be, um, opened until after council's next meeting. And at that point, there is a review committee, um, being set up to look at the qualifications and score them on the scoring sheet. Karen, Jerry, myself, Joe, Johnny, um, Scott Straley from RCAP, um, will be reviewing all of the RFQs and, uh, scoring them. And we'll bring that back to council.
Okay. Not at the next council meeting, but the next one after.
Correct, the second one in September.
September 15th.
I would like to bring a resolution, um, recognizing, um, the opening of the Antioch Wellness Center. There's a, um, the opening, the opening will be on September 6th. They're doing a small ceremony, so I would like to read a council resolution and certainly all council members are invited to attend. So at the next council meeting, I would like to bring that resolution, um, for us to approve and agree to and read here.
So you bring the actual resolution?
Yes, yes. And so will we be? Will we be ready, Brian, it sounds like not, for the street musician agreement?
September 15th is what I would recommend.
Okay.
Because I'd like to wait till after our next PAC meeting.
Okay.
Well, when do you imagine, um, we'd be hearing more about the police forums, et cetera? Will you just be recording on that?
Same meeting, because, uh, September 15th, because our next HRC meeting is September 7th.
Okay.
Okay.
Or no, September 4th, excuse me. So yeah, so September 15th.
And so will we be, will we report out on something in the eGov, I guess, at the next meeting?
Yes.
Having that, you know?
Yeah, because all of the phone call conferences are Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
So that's nine, two, okay. Jerry, anything in council chambers?
Yeah, we're having an update.
Okay.
Got that and you have the budget, budget schedule you need to approve, you had wanted to look at.
Right, oh yeah, bring the, ask Melissa, um, I don't know that she needs to come, but just have a recommendation for the budget schedule or just maybe. So we'll have that, a discussion in old business.
I think we can take the Port Authority follow-up off.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we're, it's going to be a while before we would ever get to that. I know that they're active and I know that they're actually writing projects, so they're actually writing deals, so.
Great.
They're very excited, they've.
Green County.
Yes, yes. I'm trying to think of what a project was. Oh, one of the, the doctor's building at Wright State, they're saving them a lot of money. So, um, anything else you can think of, Patty?
Off the top of my head.
She said Gaunt Park renovations, is that up by the pool or?
Baseballs.
The baseballs, yes, the ball fields. And, um, I do know that the bid, uh, the bid packet for the Sutton Farm Building is just about ready to go out.
Okay.
So.
Great. Well, that's enough. I don't mind having concise meetings, so we did okay tonight. Yes, Joan?
I have something that's totally out of sequence. Joan Edwards, um, this is, I realize this is totally out of sequence, but I was asked, um, if it was possible for you to look at putting a restroom of some kind at Ellis Pond. They had, um, there was a party there with a bunch of kids and there's no place to go. to the bathroom.
I think we've had Port of Johns there that just get dumped, so... Okay, are we ready to adjourn? Motion?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.